Good evening, welcome to the November 7th, 2018, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present tonight, so I'll call the meeting to order. The first thing on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the September 19th, 2018, meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, if none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. Before we go any further, yes, sir?
Before we get too deep off into the agenda, I think it's important that we pause for a moment of meditation and prayer for the Walker family because of the accident that happened Tuesday night. Is that right, Tuesday night?
Mr. Smothers referring to the tornado in the Midland area which tragically took the life of a lady that many of us knew, so let's do a moment of silence for her, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I start with the public hearings, I want to welcome, we have a large group from Junior Leadership Rutherford here tonight, so I want to welcome all of them. They came up before the meeting started and we got to chat for a second, so I appreciate them being here and participating in our meeting tonight, so thank you for coming, guys. Okay, we have numerous public hearings tonight, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately 3.65 acres. Excuse me, let me, before Ms. Tomlin, before we start on this, I want to move the election of the vice chair up before we start on the public hearings, in case any of us, in case I have to excuse myself, I had a little nosebleed problem coming down here in my car from the Flonase I was using, so in case I have to go out the door here for some reason, I want to have a vice chair to turn it over to. So, to replace Mr. Kurt Wade, who served on the planning commission for many years and did a wonderful job, and we want to give him our sincere thank you for all of his efforts and participation while he was here, but we need to replace him with electing another vice chair tonight. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nomination for a vice chair.
Chair, I'd like to nominate Kathy Jones.
Ms. Jones is nominated, is there another?
Second.
Ms. Jones is nominated and seconded. Motion to, any other nominations? I won't ask for a motion to cease nominations then, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Congratulations, or condolences, whichever one. Ms. Jones has been a wonderful, wonderful member of Murfreesboro Planning Commission for many, many years, more than she'd care to admit, and has been a great, great public servant while serving on the planning commission, and is probably the best prepared member of this meeting, week in and week out, so she will make a great vice chair, so thank you for being here. Okay, now back to our public hearings, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately 3.65 acres to be rezoned from commercial local to RM 16, and RM 16 to commercial fringe located along Halls Hill Pike, Bobby Kirby is applicant. Ms. Tomlin, good evening.
Good evening. This is two parcels that we're recommending you zone commercial fringe. One is zone commercial local, that's a district we're trying to get away from and move into commercial fringe, the other is RM 16, this is a commercial facility, it's a current self-storage facility, they want to expand it, it seems appropriate to the area, it fits in with the 2035 plan, so we are recommending that you hold a public hearing and then make a recommendation to the city council.
Okay. Any questions from members of the planning commission? All right, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to Before we get on with that, let me just say, if you do care to speak at one of the public hearings, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address for the record, keep your comments to no more than three minutes. If you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions, we'll try to get them answered at the conclusion of the public hearing. That being said, would anybody like to speak on behalf or against this proposal? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next public hearing is a mandatory referral and a right-of-way abandonment to consider the abandonment of a drainage easement and a segment of Cedar View Drive right-of-way. Larry Gittleman is applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Our next public hearing is for you to consider an application that's been made for the city to abandon a portion of Cedar View Drive right-of-way. This right-of-way is at the terminus of Cedar View Drive and it's identified in purple on the map that you have before you. This is frontage along just one parcel and it's a large parcel to the south. We have studied this request and gotten responses from the various utilities and departments, and have concluded that the city can in fact abandon this right-of-way if you so choose. There will be a need to maintain some easements. The developer of the property to the south proposes to include this in the planned development, the PRD program for a townhome development here, and you considered that PRD zoning change at last month's public hearings and recommended approval. You may recall that during that, during that public hearing, you did ask for them to remove a dog park that was located within that because it was near the neighbors, and so it hasn't gone to council, but before it will, it'll show that that feature is no longer there. So this action does normally require a public hearing. Also was requested a mandatory referral to consider abandoning and relocating an existing drainage easement, which is more of a routine matter, and that portion doesn't require the public hearing, but we wanted to combine these two items together into one so that you can study them comprehensively. The city engineer has the right to a drainage easement, and they've studied this and believe that we can effectively abandon that drainage easement and that the development plan will be able to manage stormwater and drainage in other fashions. The report I provided you does have the responses from the different utilities and department heads, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. We did place, ask for you to place some conditions on the approval, which are very standard conditions in any right-of-way abandonment request, basically that the developer is on the hook for providing the legal documents that we need to effect this change.
Okay.
Chairman Lamb, just one thing to add, if y'all wouldn't mind doing each in separate motions, the drainage easement and the right-of-way, I think that would probably be cleaner.
Any questions from the planning commission? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no other questions, we're ready for our two motions.
Move for approval of the abandonment of the drainage easement.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now for the other one.
Move for approval of abandonment of the right-of-way.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item C is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 2.37 acres located along Manson Pike, Old Manson Pike, Manson Court, Lyle McDonald Court, Interstate 840, and Blackman Road. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant, Ms. Rush.
Good evening, commission. The study area consists of two 10-foot wide strips located along Blackman Road and Lyle McDonald Court. It's associated with the property addressed as 1803 Blackman Road. The 10-foot wide strips were excluded from a previous annexation in order to avoid the creation of an island of unincorporated county surrounded by incorporated city, and our city attorney has advised planning that such islands that we used to have, in its opinion, are no longer prohibited by the state law. The previous annexation was completed in 2017, and in addition to the two 10-foot strips, segments of right-of-way along Blackman Road, Manson Pike, Old Manson Pike, and Manson Court are included in the study area as well. The annexation study and plan of services was included in the agenda for this hearing, and the study showed that the city would be able to extend city services to this area. The city, the study area is within the city's urban growth boundary and is contiguous with the city limits. Staff recommends approval of this and that the planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate its recommendation to the city council.
Okay, any questions? If not, we're ready for a motion. Excuse me. If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Does this work? All right. So, Abi Manda, you want my address?
Please.
1475 Avalino Circle, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 37130. So as the speaker was just saying, you said this was previously prohibited by state law, could you explain why?
We will be glad to cover that at the conclusion of the public hearing.
So we're going to vote on this with, just vote on, I mean, without answering the question, I mean?
No, we'll answer it before we vote on it. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, and what's the fiscal impact of this?
The what?
The fiscal impact?
Fiscal impact?
Fiscal, F-I.
Fiscal, money-wise, okay.
AL.
Fiscal.
Yeah, not physical.
Okay, I'll ask the staff if they, if they can address that.
That'd be much appreciated.
Okay.
I also represent the concerned constituents of Youth Leadership Rutherford.
Okay.
I see, all right.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Any other concerned citizens? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, counselor, I think that's right up your alley.
I will give this one a shot, yes. Under prior annexation law, our state supreme court had issued a ruling that leaving an island or a donut hole of unincorporated county property surrounded completely by city property was bad planning. And also, because the prior state law regarding annexation required an annexation to be reasonable, the court said that this bad planning was inherently unreasonable and shouldn't be done. So we have endeavored to not create complete islands of property surrounded by city property. This annexation law was changed over, several times, over the last about three or four years, and the reasonableness is no longer a requirement of an annexation. As a practical matter, the only thing required for annexation is that the property owner requests it, and in fact, now, there is specific authorization for what we call non-contiguous annexations. In the past, property to be annexed had to be contiguous with existing city property, and sometimes it was made contiguous by annexing a narrow strip of land to get out to the new property. That is no longer a requirement under certain circumstances, at least for a non-contiguous annexation. Because of the changes in the law, it's the opinion of the department that the result, resulting islands such as these are no longer strictly prohibited. It is still bad planning, in our opinion, nonetheless, leaving a 10- or 15-foot strip of land on the edge of a parcel that's not incorporated is at least equally bad planning, if not worse, and so we are now enclosing properties by annexing the 10- or 15-foot strip in a variety of places. So that, this is, I would call this to some extent a cleanup of a situation that was left due to the prior interpretations of our state supreme court.
Okay, and his question about fiscal impact?
The annexation study was prepared that analyzed those, that particular item, that was a good question. The 10-foot strips are part of a larger parcel that's already been annexed, so those would not incur any additional cost because they are already part of a larger property that is being serviced. In terms of the rights of way, there are no streetlights in some of these segments of roadway, and the city engineer can determine when necessary that these lights would need to be installed, and the cost of those lights would come from the city's streetlight fund, so that would be the only impact that I know of.
Okay, thank you.
Would there potentially be a fiscal impact in the city accountable property taxes on the property that would, property being increased and that is zoned in the city?
That would be a positive impact.
Well, positive impact for the city, yes.
Certainly in an annexation of this much right-of-way, the monetary impact to the city would be nominal. The, there could be a small bit of additional expense to maintain right-of-way, but we would be maintaining that road on both sides of these little sections, and so the additional cost to go ahead and handle this, these pieces while we're, while we're doing something would be nominal.
Okay.
And for example, I'm not sure if you guys are high school or college students, but there was an area near Blackman High School that, just beyond Blackman High School on Blaze, where the roadway was a county section of roadway and was, it was rough, it had potholes and, and was not maintained by the city, and we recently annexed that just to improve the consistency of the roadway. So there are certain situations where it's advantageous to increase the amount of roadway even though it is surrounded on both sides by county.
Thank you. Any other comments or? Okay, and to answer your parliamentary question about voting on it before we answer the question, like I said in my preliminary announcements, that we will take notes, or the staff will take notes of any questions that members of the public has, and we try to answer those questions at the conclusion of the public hearing, which would be before we vote. What we do not do is get into a debate over the pros and cons of those answers. If we did that, we'd be here obviously all night for each, each thing that came up, which could result in a filibuster and we can never get anything done, so, but that's, that's the way we handle it here, okay? If there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D is zoning application for approximately 0.51 acres located along Blackman Road and Lyle McDonald Court to be zone commercial highway simultaneous with annexation. The city of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant, Ms. Rush.
The subject property consists of the two 10-foot wide strips of the parcel identified at 1803 Blackman Road that was previous item on the agenda. These strips were excluded in the 2017 annexation, as noted, as the remainder of the parcel, and the parcel was zoned CH, Highway Commercial, at the time it was annexed, the larger portion. This current request to rezone the strips to CH simultaneous with the annexation is consistent with the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan. The future land use map recommends this property be general commercial, and CH zoning is consistent with that designation. The planning commission should conduct a public hearing and formulate its recommendations to the city council. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from members of the planning commission? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? I'll close the public hearing. If there's no questions from members of the planning commission, we're ready for a motion.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item E, mandatory referral right-of-way abandonment to consider the abandonment of West Lidle Street and Barker Street right-of-way. Matt Taylor is the applicant, Ms. Tomlin.
All right, this abandonment is to increase the developable, developable area for the client. You have in your packet the abandonment study that shows the impact. The engineering department, I do want to point this out, with the abandonment of this and the parcel next to it, this block of Barker Street will be converted to one-way traffic with traffic flowing northbound from West College Street to West Lidle Street. In addition to that, several of the utilities did ask for easements, and those are noted in the study. We would recommend that this request be, the abandonment be approved based on this typical comments that the applicant should be required to submit the necessary documents to the legal department, required to draft the quit claim deed, the applicant should be responsible for recording the deed, the abandoned right-of-way shall be incorporated into an existing parcel, and utility easement should be retained to accommodate. The planning commission needs to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the city council.
Okay, any questions? Thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no questions from the planning commission, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Chairman Lamb, if we could just get on the record that Ms. Jones' motion was subject to staff comments?
Subject to staff comments.
I think she said some years ago that everything she made was subject to staff comments.
Don't you remember that?
In perpetuity.
I like that, I like that.
Item F, proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding Section 7, a site plan review pertaining to the site plan review authority of the city of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Anthony.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm going to try to tough it through this, so bear with me. With this zoning ordinance amendment, staff proposes shifting a lot of the responsibility for the review of routine or typical site plans from the planning commission internally to staff. There are a few benefits to making this adjustment. First, for our applicants, plans will be approved one week earlier than they would with planning commission approval. Second, this would allow us at some point in the future to be less rigid with plan submittal dates. And third, for our planning commissions, would free up time in our daytime meetings to focus more on larger projects such as rezonings and annexation requests. It's important to remember that when we evaluate site plans, whether it be staff or the planning commission, we do so to determine compliance with the standards set forth in the zoning ordinance. The planning department is fully staffed with the exception of one engineer, and we hope to fill that position within the next few weeks. We believe that staff can competently perform the minimum standards check and can work with the applicants to ensure that the design guidelines are incorporated into each plan. This ordinance revision would still require a planning commission review for certain projects. These would include projects in special areas where the planning commission acts as a design review body, such as the gateway design overlay, or any other future special, special review area. Multifamily residential projects in the RM 12 and RM 16 zoning districts, and projects where off-site traffic, transportation, and/or drainage improvements are offered or required. Additionally, the planning director would have the discretion to send certain projects to the planning commission even if those projects qualify for administrative approval. Some of these already exist within the zoning ordinance. These include projects for which the public interest would be better served by involving the planning commission in the review process, projects for which an applicant wishes to appeal a condition imposed by staff, and projects for which staff supports an alternative approach to one or more design guidelines. I can tell you that my intent as planning director is to be very open and transparent with you as long as I am here. We will provide you with details about all administrative submittals and approvals early in the process. We recognize your role as a voice to and from the community, and we will strive to be very respectful of that. And I would tell you that if this ordinance revision is approved and you find that it does not work for you, let me know and we will rewrite it or change it back. The commission should hold a public hearing on this zoning ordinance amendment. Staff recommends that you make a favorable recommendation to the city council. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Anthony, would it impact anything if someone were to make a request and involved the sale of alcohol? Would that be something that would come for us, or is that something that you'd be comfortable with?
If it was, if it was something routine, just like a restaurant or something, I, I think we would probably be comfortable handling that in-house. If it was something larger involving manufacturer or some kind of brewery or something like, I would definitely deem that in the public interest, and I would want you to, to review that, okay?
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close this public hearing. We're ready for a motion, any questions?
So I guess you all probably looked at maybe say over the last six months or a year or something, that basically when you're bringing us site plans, there's not really anything that we ever do that changes what you brought to us anyway. We're just really looking at it and end up approving exactly what you brought. Is that pretty much the way it's worked out?
That is the way that it's working with a standard or typical site plan. Obviously, on the gateway projects, that's where you have the most input, and that's because you, you act as a design review body. On typical plans, we sometimes have some discussion about those, but generally, the way that we bring them in is, on a site plan, is the way that, that we take them back out the door. Certainly, we've, over the last, I would say over the last year, year and a half, we've strived to put more and more projects on the consent agenda for that same, for that same reason, because we don't want to bog down your meeting. We want applicants who are here with new business to be able, with big ideas and big projects, we want them to have the time to be able to talk about those, and so we've, we've made a conscientious effort to try to shift some of those more rote projects onto the consent agenda.
Definitely can tell there's been more and more on the consent agenda, and I just haven't paid enough attention to exactly which items that was and which ones it wasn't, so I'm sure there was just a process to how you decided what you could move off like that, so we appreciate all that extra hard work y'all are doing for.
We enjoy hearing Mr. Lamb read a longer and longer list at every meeting.
Consent agenda quality. Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions or comments?
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Will there be a list of items? I know you stated those types of items, so the gateway, the RM 12 would be excluded and they would come to us. Is there a list that you would provide us, or are you just going to decide that on?
So the, the, what I would call the strict list is contained within that, within that ordinance that's within your packet, and those are the ones I went over. A lot of other things are discretionary.
Yes.
And you'll, I'll beg you to trust me that I will use discretion very liberally and, and bring you as many things as, as we think we would trust you much more with making those decisions.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for our motion.
Make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The final public hearing tonight is a proposed amendments to the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan regarding map 4.2 Future Land Use pertaining to the annual update and future land use map, city of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant, Ms. Rush.
Staff is requesting to amend the Murfreesboro Comprehensive Plan 2035 Future Land Use Map. The comprehensive plan was adopted by the Murfreesboro Planning Commission on July 12, 2017, and since that adoption, the city has considered and approved 30 rezonings that were not consistent with that future land use plan, and the intention was to modify the future land use map to match the zoning that was already approved. To talk about it specifically, the future land use map is very site-specific, and at the time, going through the comprehensive study, it's very difficult on a parcel-by-parcel basis to predict what the future growth and, and direction where the city's going to be going in the future. So general trends were noted, but parcel-by-parcel is very difficult. The agenda packet identifies the 30 specific sites and the recommended changes to the future land use map. These would then coincide with the rezonings that were approved. Staff in the planning department will have future responsibility for all changes to the 2035 comprehensive plan. 2035 Comprehensive Plan, bringing those to the planning commission, and we would be able to update the map as well as any other text changes in the future if so desired. And I'm happy to answer any questions of the commission. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? All right, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that might like to speak. Last chance, guys. Sure, I knew I shouldn't have said that.
I'll be Amanda, 1475 Avellino Circle, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 37130. All right.
Attaboy.
So, yeah, am I allowed to just address the floor, or do I have to ask questions?
If you have questions, please address the chair. The staff will make note of your questions.
All right, so there's no opportunity to address my fellow constituents?
No, sir.
Okay. So you talked about 30 discrepancies between the, you know, future land use map and I guess the zoning... I forgot what you said. Is this amendment just really just making it more like easier to like change that future land use map without, you know, going through this huge like process that we're doing right now? Or is this like just kind of just reflecting those 30 changes? Like, I guess, let me make that simpler. It's like saying like, by enacting this amendment, we'll just make it easier just to change that future land use map without going throughout through this entire process again? Or is it just reflecting the changes that have just happened, the 30 changes from the previous, I guess, 2035 Future Land Use Map?
Okay. Are you clear with this question?
If there's some clarification...
Yes, sir. Anything else?
No, sir, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, honorable citizen. Any other questions, or anybody else like to come forward? Okay, if not, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Ives, you're on the floor again.
This may really be more of a planning department answer, I think. I think I know the answer to it, but...
Okay, either Mr. Anthony or Ms. Rush.
For each of those 30 zoning items that had taken place over the last calendar and fiscal year, the analysis was completed, and those items each individually were analyzed and had completed the process and were approved ultimately by the city council. So what we're doing today is kind of a cleanup measure. We're just making the future land use map reflect the specific changes that we had done over the last year, so they are consistent.
Sorry. Sorry. Can't have any questions from the floor. Parliamentary procedure. Robert Suriel's for... Thank you, Ms. Rush.
You're welcome.
The land use map is a living document, you know. It can come back and have changes to it, as you will see over the years to come. We do the best we can on the very front end, but obviously, things happen, different growth patterns, other things occur, and we have to come back and tweak it some, so that's like city government in any way with the codes and everything else that we have, so... Okay, any other questions, or anybody else? Okay, we've closed the public hearing, we're ready for a vote unless the city planning commission has questions. Ready for a motion.
Gay questions.
Ready for a motion.
Honorable Chairman, I move for approval.
Honorable Chair, I'll second.
Thank you very much. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. After all that, I may say no myself. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. Move on to staff reports and other business. Ms. Rush, Mr. Anthony, yes?
I do have one quick item. I think that Lexi or Carolyn sent out earlier continuing education numbers for this year. We're getting toward the end of the year, so if you happen to be short, I believe there'll probably be one more legal seminar before the end of the year. We're going to guess.
I anticipate an hour in December.
And another option for you is, we still have three Fridays left this year for Friday American Planning Association webinars, which we host in our office from 12 to 1:30. That gets you one and a half credits. You'll have to bring food. My food budget is shot, so I can't. I just can't.
Up to the end of the year, all that stuff.
I'm looking for a budget amendment. If anybody wants to make a motion, I'll tell you. But feel free to... And if you get toward the end of the year and you still haven't been able to get those hours, get in contact with us, and we'll work with you on an alternative means of doing so.
Well, Mr. Smuthman, who has no life, has 52 hours, I think, if required, four hours. Maybe he could share some of his hours with anybody. Next thing, our next meeting is next Thursday, correct? We need to point that out.
That is correct. That's the daytime meeting. It'll be next Thursday, 1:00.
The 1:00 o'clock meeting.
Next Thursday, November 15.
We will meet in room 218 upstairs. If you guys want to come to that, but you will not have a chance to speak. So that, and Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
This is your first evening meeting at the Murfreesboro Planning Commission.
It is.
You were here last month for the afternoon meeting, but I was remiss in not welcoming you to the planning commission, taking... Mr. Martin was elected in August and appointed or sentenced to serve on the planning commission along with Councilman Smotherman here by the city council, and so this is his first night meeting, so thank you very much. Looking forward to many years of your participation.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Any other business? If not, we stand adjourned.